Okay, at seven o'clock on the news. I will open tonight's lunenburg select board meeting of Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the lunenburg public access channel. The town of Lunenburg response to the COVID-19 pandemic is currently following the guidance from the lunenburg board of health, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent its spread. All town facilities are open by appointment only currently and in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law chapter 30a section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable on Facebook Live on the public access Facebook page and will be able to be found on the lunenburg access YouTube channel within 24 hours after its completion. If you have a smart device, a computer tablet, smartphone, and you wish to participate in this meeting, you can do so via the Zoom application. The webinar ID for tonight's meeting is 9091740347. If you don't have a smart device or wish to participate for whatever reason via phone, you can do that by dialing 8884754499. And once again, the webinar ID is 9091740347. If you wish to speak and you are using the Zoom application, please familiarize yourself with the raise your hand app, which I believe is under the reactions tab at the bottom. And if you are on the telephone and wish to speak, please press star nine and that will indicate to me that you will you wish to speak and I will call on you, the chair will call on you at the appropriate time. This agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and those that are reasonably anticipated by the chair votes may be taken as a result of these discussions and not all items listed may in fact be discussed while other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Roll call vote here, not not roll call vote, roll call attendance, just another point of order here. So Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Marino.
Here.
Mr. Jeffries.
Here.
And I am here as a chair, Madam Town Manager. Are you present?
Present.
Excellent. Okay. So first things first, we've called to order and I handed over to Ms. Adams, flag in hand for the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do we have any public comment this evening from the board? I will have. Yeah, I don't know, public comment or announcement. For those who may not have known last night was the citizen party caucus that occurred at the middle school, high school auditorium. For those who aren't aware, that is the local, one of the times where you can get to get your name on the ballot for all elected positions of which there are 19 up for election this year. And at that caucus, there were nominations for 14 of those positions. No position had a competitive nomination. So there's only one person for each of these and five were left blank that there were no nominees for it. The ones that were left blank, there's a board of health member for three years, an assessor for three years, an assessor for one year, a school committee member for three years, and a commissioner of trust funds for three years. Obviously, we need those positions to be filled. And all the other ones, if you're interested in any of the others, you can get a full list of all the positions on this year's ballot at the town website under the town clerk's office. You can pull, at this point, you can pull nomination papers. And those nomination papers will require 40 plus, let's just say 50 to be safe, signatures that need to be signed by registered voters in Lunenburg and then those nomination sheets need to be submitted to the town clerk by the 27th, I believe. That also is on the website and I will try to quickly get on there just to, sorry, I don't have that up. I want to give everybody the best information here. While I'm pulling this up, I want to say that, you know, competitive races are really good because it causes discussions between ideas and candidates and perspectives. So I encourage people, it's also a very, for me at least, fulfilling experience to be part of town and having served in many different capacities. So if you are out there, you're listening, you're interested in finding a way to serve the community in an elected position, this is the time to do it. And I would encourage you to get on, I'm sorry, here, where is this? Doesn't work so well on my iPad.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I can tell you the last day to pick up papers is March 25th at 5:00 PM and the last day to return them is March 27th at 5:00 PM.
So it was March 27th. You can pick up your nomination papers now. The last time you can pick them up is the 25th. But you want, if you're interested, you want to pick them up now and work to get signatures however you can. I know this was tricky last year because of the pandemic and since we still have that, getting nomination papers may not be the easiest, but again, I encourage people to do it. Any public comment from the public? Okay, Bill, you are, you are on.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I just wanted to make a quick comment here. Speaking as a cemetery commission chairman, I wanted to publicly thank Mrs. Lorraine Mendoza for her six years of service on the commission. She has decided not to seek reelection this year. She's been an invaluable member of the commission and I've enjoyed working with her for the last three years. Wanted to publicly thank her and wish her, wish her well.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the board, I would extend those thanks for her service as well.
Thank you.
Any other public comment from the public? Okay, announcements. So the other announcement we have is that the water district is having their annual meeting on Saturday, March 27th. Actually, this, they have in their annual election and meeting, it's on the same day. So if you live in the water district, you are an eligible voter for that that ballot where they, they will elect a water commissioner or commissioners. I don't know how many are on the ballot this year. Also that their meeting follows at 10:00 AM. So 10:00 AM is the actual meeting. I know this is confusing to some people, but they, the water district is a completely separate entity from the town. So the town's annual meeting is different than the water districts. They hold theirs at their, the water district facility on Mass Ave. And I know one of the things that's up on, one of the articles that's up on their warrant is a non-binding article regarding supplying water to the potential development at Howard Street. Now, there was a special water district meeting in January where they wanted to extend the water district to include that entire property. Right now, the water district touches that property or includes a very small bit of it. That was resoundingly rejected for many reasons. But now they have another question about supplying water to that property through another mechanism where we would put a meter there or they would put a meter there and somehow treat it like a distribution system of another water company or thereabouts. I don't have all the details. I urge people from the Lunenburg Water District, if you have an opinion about this matter, to go to that meeting and again, provide input about how you feel the perspective is of running this extension, which was proposed up Chase Road last time, up Chase Road and then down up New West Townsend Road to voice your opinion. Again, it's a non-binding article, which means they could, the commissioners could, or they may or may not follow whatever the attendees vote upon. But it's good to give people your opinion even on those things. So that again is that Saturday, March 27th at 8:00 AM to 10:00 is the election and 10:00 AM is the annual meeting. You can get more information from their web, their Facebook page, the Lunenburg Water District, or you can call the Water District directly and get more information as well. So I encourage people to do that. Madam Town Manager, do you have any announcements?
I do not.
Okay. 7:05. A meeting with the sponsors of annual town meeting articles, including a representative from the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources on the APR article, the Personnel Committee Chairman on the Salary Admin Plan article, the Land Use Director on Planning Board articles, and the Cemetery Chair on the Cemetery Commission article. Let's take them in the order that I just read them, one at a time. So the annual, the representative from Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources on the APR article, that would be Ms. Padula. So I will ask her to unmute. Very apropos background.
Yes, thank you.
And I will hand it over to the town manager if you want to introduce this article.
Certainly. So I can read the article itself so the public knows as well what the wording is. Before I do that, basically, the property owners at 780 Northfield Road, 490 Chase Road and 411 Chase Road, it's all the same property owners. Dan and Kathleen Pierce approached the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources to submit an application for agricultural preservation restriction for this property. And this is what Ms. Padula is here tonight before the board to discuss and answer any questions regarding this. So this article is requesting the 10% match that's needed to move this to APR. The state would be paying the other 90%. And the article is to see if the town will raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of 66,500 for 10% local match towards the purchase of an agricultural preservation restriction on approximately 99 acres of farmland at the corner of Chase Road and Northfield Road, otherwise called Pierce's Christmas Tree Farm. The APR is valued at 665,000. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts APR program is paying 598,500. Project site is recorded in Northern Worcester County Registry of Deeds, Book 8848, page 318, Book 5330, page 2336, Book 2826, page 15, Book 2826, page 13, and Book 8488, page 318, known as Assessor's Map 33, parcel 6, and Assessor's Map 38, parcels 17 and 24.2, and owned by Daniel R. Pierce and Kathleen Pierce. And to meet such appropriation, accept gifts, bequests, and grants from individual groups, corporations, and to authorize a select board to enter into an agricultural preservation restriction with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to be held in common with the town or take any other action relative there, too. So without, through you, Mr. Chair, would ask Ms. Padula to describe the parcel and a little bit more about the process, the APR process involved.
Ms. Padula.
Yes, thank you for inviting me. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. I do have to disclose that I do cover Worcester County for the APR program, but I also am a resident of Lunenburg. So Dan and Dan and Kathleen applied in 2020 to the APR program. This is a great project. It's, it consists of a high percentage of prime and state important soils. Dan and his wife have been growing Christmas trees for years. Several years ago, they started leasing out acreage to Steve Violet, who's raising vegetables there, too. The plan is eventually for Steve to purchase the land at its agricultural value, once the APR is in place, and Dan will stay on and basically mentor Steve in the raising of Christmas trees. So it'll be a nice little diversified property that Steve can add to other land that he owns. I'd like to make one correction. We did appraise 99 acres and the APR value is 665,000, but Dan will be gifting an additional 10 acres. So the APR, when it's finally surveyed, will probably be closer to 109, 110 acres. The APR policy is typically, we request a 20% match to, from, for the municipality in which the farm is located. But because the town of Lunenburg has an agricultural commission and a right to farm bylaw, those two things are really great, helping the town decrease the percentage that we're requesting from 20% to 10% because the town hasn't enacted those two, two items. So that's why we're requesting 66,500 from, from the town, which will allow them to co-hold the APR with the Commonwealth. It's in perpetuity. It's on our spending plan, if all goes well, for fiscal year 23. So our goal would be to close between July 1st, 2022, and June 30th, 2023.
I would.
Folks have any questions for me?
Yeah, I will open it up to the board. If anybody has any questions about the program, the property, the article, anything. Well, I will comment that I know that the Pierce's were looking at this several, several times before, and I am so pleased that this will, I mean, that's such a valuable piece of agricultural land and they've used it. It's a, I mean, first of all, the Pierce's run a great business there. They've done a great job. And to see that it'll be agricultural in perpetuity and not that that's part of the article, but the fact that, you know, Steve Violet is already using some of the land and leasing is, is great news. So I think it's a great win for the, for the town. It really keeps the rural and agricultural character that people have talked about ever since I remember moving here. So, and at this price, it's really, to me, it's pretty straightforward. I always hate to say no brainer, but I guess I just said it.
And I, if I could note that Lunenburg has the, the second largest block of APR land in Worcester County, second only to Dudley. There are 11 parcels, 851 acres of APR land in town. And if you drive up and down Lancaster Avenue, almost all of that open farmland you see is protected by APRs and pretty, will hopefully always look like that.
Excellent. How much, how much do we need to pass Dudley?
Oh, we're pretty close, actually. Get some notifications in.
Not that we're competitive at all.
Get folks to apply. Send them in. We have money.
Ms. Adams.
My was more in the way of comments and questions. In addition to the data that you just said, the second largest in Worcester County, it's nice to know those little nostalgic pieces of town, favorite roads to drive down are, are protected. But also, all the work of, you know, groups like the Agricultural Commission and, and Right to Farm, it's really neat to hear there to be relevance to those, meaning in this case, it saved 66,500. You know, it's, it's saved, you would have been looking for, you know, 120 something thousand for this to happen. So we've seen the value in the farmers' markets and things that people put together, but in this case, there's real value to all those efforts. So I just wanted to comment on those because it's nice to see the, I don't want to say the smaller, but these different boards and commissions that meet and work on things, it really pays off in a moment like this.
Exactly.
Madam Town Manager.
I just had a question for Ms. Padula that came up from a member of the public for, in regards to excavation, I know that has to be approved through the process. Is there a definition of soil excavation?
Excavation, it can, is proved only if it improves the agricultural viability of the property. So if a farmer needs to take down a berm to flatten a field, that's something that he would need to request approval for and would likely be approved if, if it would open up a field and he could plant more land. If it's excavation solely for the purpose of commercial purposes to sell topsoil, that would not be approved. And typically, if excavation is approved, the material has to stay on site. But if the town does have a soil removal bylaw, the APR program cannot supersede that. So we would always work with the town on approvals.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Seeing none. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the explanation and all the work you do on behalf of Lunenburg and, and the state with this great program. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Personnel Committee Chair on the Salary Admin Plan, that would be Mr. Arnold. Let's find him right here.
Hello.
Good evening, Mr. Arnold. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing great, thanks. So again, Madam Town Manager, if you want to introduce this before we hand it over to Mr. Arnold or however is best to talk about this article.
Um, I can give a brief synopsis. So we had approached the Assistant Town Manager and I, Julie Beliveau, who's on the call tonight as well, the Personnel Committee about the longevity in the current bylaw to be in line with the rest of our bargaining units, moving from a percentage to flat-based amount, as well as additional positions that needed to be, that were approved by the Personnel Committee and that needed to be added to the accompanying class plan. And I will let Chairman take it from here.
So the, you know, the first part of the article is specifically about adding some positions that were, that were needed. I guess the one we had the most discussion about was longevity pay. And we came up with kind of a solution that essentially doesn't impact current SAP employees, but would be a change for any new hires after, I believe, June 30th of this year, where it would change, any new hires would fall under a similar longevity pay scale as, I guess it's like the police and fire contracts. Is that right, Heather?
So the department head.
Yeah, for the, for the department head positions and then the clerical contract for all other positions. I guess the one, the one thing that I think still may need some work is that, so I don't know how we really want to approach this, but I mean, I, I guess people were agreement on, on what we have here, or at least the majority were in agreement, but I think the, the one issue which, which Heather has, has mentioned as well is that there could be some debate about what, what positions are considered department head positions and what positions are not considered that. So that, that could lead to some confusion. So I think as far as the longevity pay goes, we may need to, if we can't clarify that, you know, before, in this article, then maybe longevity pay is something that we should wait on until the fall meeting. Or else we may just, if it is, if we do continue with this, then we'd have to, I think, probably revisit that for the next meeting anyway.
Yeah, well, if you're looking at if it passed and you're already looking at that, you may want to revisit it. I'd probably agree with your first comment that maybe the whole thing for longevity would be eliminated from this and would just revisit it one more time in the fall, but that's just one opinion. So we have our HR Assistant Town Manager and HR person, Julie Beliveau, Beliveau here. So did you have anything to add? Anything you'd like to say about the article?
I think holding off until at least the fall town meeting would be beneficial. I feel like there's a lot of areas that we still disagree on and we need to get a better understanding of it. Personally, I think we need to look at longevity in terms of years of service and not based on a position or a position's rate of pay. I think five years is five years, 10 years is 10 years of service, 15 and so forth. And I think that's important that we understand and look at it that way and, you know, maybe look at it in a way that all longevity payments are the same.
So if I'm, if I'm, if that part gets removed, the only part we would be looking at would be the adding the positions. Is that, is everybody on agreement on that at least?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions for? Anybody who's been, you know, Mr. Arnold or Ms. Beliveau or the town manager regarding this article? I will say that I'm personally in favor. If there's a, if there's not at least close to unanimity on the, that, that piece, I would probably agree with the intent of removing the longevity and just do the positions and do some work over the summer and early fall for the fall town meeting. That would be my, because otherwise I think it's just going to confuse people.
So we have to vote to pass over?
No, 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 we'll just, again, this hasn't been printed yet, so we can, we can either remove it because it hasn't been printed if, if everybody's in agreement here. I mean, Mr. Arnold, do you speak for the Personnel Committee? Do you have the authority to say you don't want that? Or do you have to?
I, I don't know if I have the authority to do. It's, you know, maybe the town lawyer would have to weigh in there, but I guess what I would say is it's something we discussed as a possibility that maybe we come back to this. But this, I mean, the plan, the article as written was approved by the committee, a vote of three to, three to two. But I, I think, I think, I think there would be an agreement that there is nothing lost by waiting, by holding off on the longevity thing and revisiting it. Certainly, there was a lot of discussion about it and I think, you know, the issue of who's considered a department head and who isn't, that, that does need to be resolved. And so I think we need to come up with some better language around that, for sure.
Okay. Madam Town Manager, when does this go to print?
The board votes on this on the 30th. So if I may, maybe the Personnel Committee can meet between now and the 30th.
That was my question, right? Can you meet and just determine with a vote if everybody's okay or the majority is okay with just, you know, amending this article and just removing that part and just leave the positions part?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So that'd be great if you guys can do that because then, yeah. So Jim, Mr. Marino, no, we wouldn't, we weren't voting on anything. It's, hasn't printed and if they want to amend it before we go to print, that's fine.
Great.
Excellent. Any other questions about this article? I mean, I'm perfectly fine with the positions. They make sense. And again, when we add positions, we're not hiring people. These are just positions in, in place. I mean, some of them may have people intend to be hired or anything, but this is just setting the grades and everything. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Arnold, I thank you for your. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Arnold, I thank you for your time.
All right.
And you'll get back to us with the, if you guys meet, what that vote was to either remove it or, or not.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, Land Use Director on Planning Board Articles, Mr. Bernie.
Hello there.
Good evening.
So the Board has put forward two articles. I believe the first is to add to the definition of two-family dwelling. But I think it was three years ago when the Board brought the use table to annual town meeting. At that time, two-family dwellings were required to have one and a half times the required lot size. In the district they were located, somewhere in the 90 or so drafts that we wrote of the use table that that requirement was dropped from the definition. It became, became aware of it about a month ago, brought it to the Board and they've agreed that it would make sense to bring it back and reinstitute the, that requirement that was left out as a clerical error. So that's the first article. And the second is to delete the text of Section 250 6.1, which is the parking calculations for uses within town. Excuse me. And I'm not sure how old these calculations are, but they are fairly out of date and they don't cover many of the uses that are outlined in the new use table. So the Board has gone through and come up with calculations for each use listed in the use table and defined. And that's the, the table you see in front of you.
Okay. Is this, these are quite the calculations in some cases, man. Do I have any questions? Well, we can take them individually first. Any questions about the two-family dwelling article? Okay, seeing none. Any questions about the off, off-street parking and loading areas article? Mr. Dwyer.
Mr. Chair, through you, Mr. Bernie. I guess when I, I looked at the article as submitted, what isn't clear is, are these minimum required spaces?
Yes, they are. Okay, thank you.
What is a water supply use category? I'm not even sure what that means.
Uh, it would be the wells, wellheads, or other areas that are bringing that water in that would potentially need service or checking on a semi-regular basis.
Thank you. If anybody has no questions, you sound pretty straightforward to me. I will say that we appreciate your time, Mr. Bernie.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night. I think so.
And last but not least, Mr. Tyler, Cemetery Chair on the Cemetery Commission article. Let me unmute Mr. Tyler.
Hello again.
Hello. I don't know, Madam Town Manager, if you want to introduce this or Bill can just jump in?
This used to be a regular article on the town meeting warrant. I think it was the last. It hasn't been on the warrant, is that right, Phil?
It wasn't on the warrant last year, no.
Right. But it's transferring funds from the sale of cemetery lots for the care improvement embellishment of the cemeteries. And the amount is 15,000. That's in the warrant article. Now let Bill Tyler, the Chairman of the Cemetery Commission, answer questions on related use of these funds.
Yeah, the long and the short of it basically is every year we make an appropriation from this account to pay for some annual expenses. We always have. They usually round about $4,000. They include, the biggest part of it is the website that we run through the cemetery information system. They host and maintain the website and that costs us around $2,000 a year. And that, what that does is enables the public to search both cemeteries for graves and loved ones. It's a great resource. And there is some maintenance fees involved with that and the hosting fees. Then we have some other items that are smaller amounts, markers, flags for the graves, veterans. That's, that's the usual annual, every year. Last year, we didn't take out an appropriation because we had taken out in fiscal year 20 enough money for the new cemetery building. And due to the pandemic, nothing transpired over the, over that year. So we didn't, we didn't have an appropriation last year. So as you know, while I'm speaking about the cemetery building, it is, for all intents and purposes, complete. There's a few items we have to finish off. But I, I do want to take the opportunity to thank Monty Tech for their, their efforts in this regard because it was a tough year for everybody. You know, we had to deal with some COVID issues with them, the school, cold temperatures. You know, some of the time, these kids were out there with 10 to 15 degrees and snowing and they were out there working. So they did an admirable job. And so anytime anybody wants to take a run by there and take a look at it, it's really is a, is a nice building. But we have a few more things we have to finish up there. The Electrical Department of Monty Tech is going to do the wiring. The other amount of the article is we have a new project that we want to restore the, some of you may not be aware of it, but there's another town cemetery on the corner of Fish Street and Lincoln Street by Cherry Hill. It's technically called the Ludrich Family Burial Yard. And it's been neglected over the years through nobody's fault. It's just kind of taken a backseat. And we've contracted to have some trees taken down and some underbrush that's there. It's kind of overtaken some of the graves. And then at the, when that's done, we're working in conjunction with the Historical Commission and Richard McGrath to construct, or I shouldn't say construct, but continue the stone wall that's, that's, that's there. There's, there's a stone wall on two sides and we want to continue to enclose the whole cemetery with an iron gate and to make it more secure. So that's basically what we're, what the appropriation is for. I'd be happy to ask any, answer any questions you may have about it.
I will open it up. Does anybody have any questions about the cemetery article or anything that Mr. Tyler has just indicated? Ms. Adams?
Sure, I have a question. I don't know if it's for Mr. Tyler, for the Town Manager. In terms of the sales of the cemetery plots going to support cemetery activities, in the absence of this article, where, where is the money directed from the sale of the cemetery plots? Can you repeat that last part? Sure, in the absence of this article, which is asking to direct the money from the sale of plots to the care of these cemetery items, in the absence of this article, where does the money go from the sale of cemetery plots? That goes into that account. That's a separate account. For any funds that are received from selling plots goes into this account. And this is transferring that amount out of that account.
This just allows it to be appropriated. The money, if we didn't appropriate, would just accumulate in that account.
Right.
Okay, so they, so the Cemetery Commission doesn't have access to the funds for projects unless there's a request like this made.
Right.
It's kind of like PAC, you know, PAC is the same. They, they could get the fees from the cable fees, but they can't spend it without an appropriation bill article, sorry.
And just to point out as well, there's, there's also a budget for cemetery within the operating budget.
Excellent. Bill, I want to, I want to thank you for letting us go on the ride of the building going up. I liked all your updates during the year on Facebook. And, you know, I, I concur with you that a lot of adverse conditions, but they're really doing a nice job and it's nice to see that you're, you're pleased as chair with that building. I can't wait for it to be finished so we can get a, you know, have some kind of opening or something.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that struck me was I'm speaking with the Building Commissioner. He said that, you know, he hasn't dealt with Monty Tech personally. He's dealt with other schools, vocational schools. He said that one of the things that strikes him is that generally the work they do is, is above code. And, and because they're, you know, they're teaching the kids how to do it right. You know, once they go off on their own, they can do what they want. But as far as a school goes, they, they do things exactly right. And, and like I say, it's above code and it's really, the kids are very, very polite. And, you know, you know, it's just, it's great to see the, and it's very professional. There are instructors there all the time and they, they keep these kids moving all the time. You know, we, I didn't, I didn't generally, they kind of frowned on us taking pictures of the kids. I guess it's kind of a privacy issue there, so we didn't really take too many, too many pictures of that. But there really is a great program and I would encourage the town to, you know, whenever they can. I mean, obviously you can't do a huge project with that, but, you know, it really is a great resource for the town.
Agreed. All right, unless somebody has any questions. Mr. Tyler, I thank you for your time in explaining this article.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our 705, as you see from the agenda, about the community outreach got canceled by the applicants, so this may return or may not depending on, on circumstances in their control, not our control. Let's go on to interviews, appointments, reappointments. We have the ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of the Council on Aging Van Driver, Peter Tomlinson. Madam Town Manager.
Thank you. So there's only one appointment I'm asking for ratification tonight. And as so noted, Peter Tomlinson is a Council on Aging Van Driver. Last week you had voted on ratifying a different van driver. That person had to withdraw their application. So this person is in place of your previous ratification.
So if anybody has any questions for the Town Manager regarding this appointment or if not, I would entertain a motion on ratifying the appointment.
Move to ratify Peter Tomlinson as the Council of Aging Van Driver.
One second. Excellent.
Many seconds.
Roll, roll call. Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
And an aye for me. Congratulations, Mr. Tomlinson. Okay, then we have a vote, current business, a vote to transfer land to the Conservation Commission pursuant to the November 17, 2020 Special Town Meeting, Article 18 and 19, located at 111 Mulpus Road Rear and 960 Northwest Townsend Road, New West Townsend Road or NW Townsend Road Rear. I see we have the Chair of the Conservation Commission. I will have him unmute. I don't know. So Madam Town Manager, this is something that was voted by the town? And this is just following through with that? Is that correct?
Correct. And the vote that the Board needs to take is in the Google Drive, so the wording of the vote.
All right. Well, before we do the vote and the reading of the article, does anybody have any questions or comments about these two pieces? That includes you, Mr. Pease, if you have anything you want to add before I read this wonderfully worded article or vote. Seeing none. Okay. So this is a vote of the Select Board. I move the vote to convey the property located at 111 Mulpus Road Rear, parcel ID 043-0025-00 and 970 NW Townsend Road Rear, parcel ID 04-0001-00 in the Town of Lunenburg, Select Board meeting date of March 16th, 2021. Pursuant to the votes on Article 18 and 19 of the Special Town Meeting on November 17th, 2020, the Select Board approves the conveyance and transfer of the land known as a numbered 111 Mulpus Road Rear, parcel ID 043-0025-00, containing 6.0 acres of land, as more specifically identified in the Town of Lunenburg Assessor's Map as Parcel 25, as shown on Map 43, and additional land numbered 970 NW Townsend Road Rear, parcel IDs 04-0001-00, containing 16.0 acres of land, as more specifically identified in the Town of Lunenburg Assessor's records as Parcel 1, as shown on Map 4, for nominal consideration to the Lunenburg Conservation Commission for Conservation and Passive Recreation Purposes pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 40, Section 8C, as it may be from time to time amended. And further, the Select Board authorizes its Chair, Tom Alonso, to enter into and execute on its behalf any and all documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of the land to the Conservation Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Glad they only put, you know, parcel IDs in there twice. If there are no questions or comments, I will take a roll call vote. I see no hands raised. So Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries? And an aye for me. So when do I, I guess I have to come in and sign this? Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Pease, for joining us. Current business number two, review the Town Manager evaluation process and timeline. Yes, everybody's favorite part of the year for the Select Board, especially the Chair. There should be a document with the performance timeline. And for those at home, so it involves five dates. So no later than April 2nd, the Town Manager's self-evaluation will be completed. Between April 12th and April 15th, the members, the Board members, Select Board members will send their draft evaluations to the Town Manager and schedule meetings with the Town Manager, individual meetings. No later than April 22nd, members send their final evaluations to the Select Board Chair. Between April 22nd and April 29th, the Select Board Chair compiles the evaluation into a composite evaluation. And then on May 4th and then on May 7th, 11th, two subsequent meetings, the Select Board will meet to review and accept the evaluation. So this is, we want to try to keep to this timeline. Last year, we got the pandemic threw everybody for a loop and it went on well beyond that. So some members had obviously not been on the Board and couldn't fill out evaluations. So this is going to be a pretty tight deadline. But it all starts off with you, Madam Town Manager, so it's up to you to keep the timeline straight.
Will do.
All right. That's, because April 2nd, tick tock, tick tock. It's only like a couple of weeks away.
Yeah, right in the middle of the budget season.
Yes, well. All right. So everybody here should, I mean, we have the document. If you can have it laying. All right, so everybody here should, I mean, we have the document, if you can have Elaine send the blank document to us all again. Members can start doing their draft ones before they see the self evaluation. So you can start doing them just to gain a heads up here. But that that one week period that the chair gets to do the composite, that's, I need them, I need a week. So if somebody's late, then the whole thing is going to be late and I'd rather not do that if we can avoid it. And like we did last year, after the first meeting, where the composite is introduced, the, you know, you'll be able, all the board members will be able to see all the other ones on file, but not take them out of the building, they won't be distributed. You'll be able to look at other people's evaluations if you so choose. Not required because you'll have yours, everyone's will already have been done, but it is available to you. Ms. Adams.
I'm sure the second action, the members send draft evaluations to the town manager and schedule a meeting. And it says April twelfth through April fifteenth, is that that you want all the meetings scheduled between those days?
I think that is the, yes. I mean, again, members send their final, if if it drifts a day, as long as you can hit the next one, as long as you're done with your final one by the twenty second, I guess it can go off a day or so.
Okay, but the preference is for us to schedule a meeting on twelve, thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen that week.
Yeah, one of those four days, yep, that week.
We're not getting voice, Heather, I think. You're not muted, but I'm not hearing. Okay, um, it could be before the twelfth because you'll receive my self evaluation, but that gives you time. That was meant to give the board time to compile their evaluations as well. The kids might be in school.
You mean, I'm assuming you mean actuals, like physically in school.
Yes, when school is in the home, there's constraints to.
No, no, I I just, yeah, I mean, just partially being physical.
Whole new world.
No, everybody's been waiting for it, so. All right, any questions about this or ability to hit these target dates? Okay, wow, this is much too congenial a group tonight, I'm telling you. All right, let's go on to minutes. Do we have, I didn't see any minutes. Do we have minutes?
There are no minutes for tonight.
No, I didn't think so. Uh, warrants. I didn't sign any last week, I wasn't here. I think I'll have some tomorrow, I'm guessing. And action, the action items from anybody.
Um, all I would say is, I had talked about the the donation bins up at Walmart and a couple of other items, and I just wanted to thank Heather. You have such timely and thorough responses to those type of things and I think that means a lot. The only thing I'll mention is the trash hit Facebook again. People are struggling with their trash bags tearing open. Just relay that we have some ongoing stress in that area.
For those listening who didn't hear last time, so we will be using a different type once the current size bags are depleted, the stock we have, and the newer size will fit in. We we got samples from from Acton of a different size. It's, I mean, the the capacity of the the bag is the same, still a thirty pound weight and everything, but it has a wider mouth, so it will fit a traditional trash bin. You won't have to stretch it and hope for warm weather so that it's stretchable and doesn't break. Yes, Ms. Adams.
Oh, I guess I would say, I know there's changes coming, but if 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 there really is a batch of them that is failing folks, should they be recalled or withdrawn? Instead of just selling off that of which doesn't work until we, you know, are able to sell new ones. I myself haven't had any trash bag failures, but if if there really are a lot of complaints coming in from from a specific batch or something, is there a way to 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 do anything about that or? I'll get in touch with the bag vendor and so problems we've had before, I would say the wrong sized bags in a batch or faulty ones, we, they have returned. So the vendor gets in contact with the actual resident or whomever it is who purchased the bags and they work directly with them. So rather than Facebook, the best person to contact would maybe be yourself or the DPW? Yes, like if they sent me an email, I can get them and rate in contact with them or bag vendor. Sounds like that would be more effective, so I'll do it be next time I see a a thread starting up.
Any other action items?
I think you spoke too soon, Tom. You said we're all being congenial. I'm hearing his trash talk.
Oh, wow, wow. Touche.
Well, I missed out on the comment about the cemetery building. I was dying to go see it.
Wow. All right, well, but for our annual select board awards, I know it gets funniest. Okay, committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffries.
Um, this, too briefly, so the council of aging did not meet this month and they have a meeting scheduled for next month. So there's nothing to report there for the library trustees. So I didn't mention this last week, but they are, earlier in the month, they had a couple of different focus group sessions with different members of the community that they reached out to regarding their strategic plan. Part of the way that funding works with the library additional funds is that when they have a strategic plan, it's kind of a five year vision. It helps identify where, what direction they want to go and what kind of programs they want to offer. And then through the strategic plan, it helps provide funding for that. So they did have those meetings at the beginning of the month. I participated in one. I know the town manager did as well and I thought it was a, it was a lot longer than I expected. It was about two hours, but it was a really good session, actually. I enjoyed it. The library does normally have meetings on the third Thursday of the month, so they normally would have a meeting on the eighteenth. However, it has been rescheduled to the twenty fifth, so at six forty five, and that's all I have.
Excellent. Anybody else have any committee meetings? Reports? Nope. Okay. So we've got old business. Discussion on any of the following, the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget, the capital plan, the financial forecast and the annual town meeting warrant articles. We'll go in reverse because the annual, what you see before in the Google Drive is, that is the list for warrant articles. It closed this afternoon. And what do we go up to here? We go up to?
E, F F.
Double F, yes. So that's twenty six and what is it, A, B, C, D? Say thirty two, thirty two articles. I will work with the town manager to order them, how we want them to appear. But I don't, if anybody has any questions about any of them, I think most of them are pretty, we knew they were coming, the rest of these, one of them is a citizen petition, two of them are citizen petitions, I'm sorry. And the rest, we all knew about, we talked about some of them tonight. So, Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, you had mentioned, Mr. Chair, that you wanted, that you had a couple of revisions in mind for the article about the, about the architectural preservation district.
Yep. And I will get them, I will get them to the board for next week.
Okay.
Yep. In fact, let me write that down.
Mr. Chair, are you looking for us tonight to make, to start the process of making recommendations? Or do we want to do that in a swoop in two weeks?
When is the printing date again? The thirtieth?
The final date where you'll vote and approve all the articles for the warrant to be signed is the thirtieth for the next meeting.
So is next, no, today's the. So next week is our last meeting before we have to do that?
We don't have a meeting on the twenty third.
Oh, we're doing it all on the thirtieth.
But it is on the agenda if you wanted to do recommendations for any of the articles.
Well, let me ask, if anybody has any questions about budgets or any of the other items on that, on that old business line. Okay, so let's come back to it. I think we can do some of them. Well, let's get through the agenda and we'll come back to that. We'll do, we'll do the ones that are straightforward. If that's okay with everyone? All right. Appointment process procedure review. So while I was out on vacation last week, I guess there were some revisions that were made last week. And if we want to review those. So we have the rev B. Okay. Do we have that? Do we have a revision?
It was sent out to the board that.
Not on the Google Drive.
No, it was, um, it was a Google Doc, so it showed all the revisions.
And then we have, I guess, the executive assistant to the town manager put in reviews, a a comment or a memo regarding some of these dates. Did everybody read Elaine's memo?
Wait, I didn't see the memo, Tom. Where was it?
It's in the Google Drive under, under the reappointment appointment process folder for tonight's meeting.
All right, I got it, I got it. Thank you.
So she makes some important points. First, the first point is that the, when we advertise the Lunenburg Ledger about what their submission deadline is, so she's suggesting for step number four is that the list be changed to the first Friday in April, which according to the reasoning being that that's when the the deadline is to submit it on noon of Monday, the the next Monday. I think that makes sense to employ this deadline. Anybody disagree with that?
No.
All right, so we don't have to take official votes. We'll, by consensus, we'll just put that in. We'll change number four to say the first Friday in April. Then she has a, step number five, having a deadline of May twenty fifth would only allow me two business days to coordinate the interviews with the select board for the following week. This is also the week leading up to Memorial Day when people are thinking about holiday activities. And also she's saying that May twenty fifth would also be eight weeks since the publication of the list in the local paper. And if you give people, she says, if in my experience, if you give people too much time to react, they tend to forget. So I would suggest no more than six weeks between the advertisement and the deadline to apply. Again, rather than a particular date, I would suggest by the second Thursday in May.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think she would be best suited to know.
I would totally agree with you.
What are the right moves to make in regards to the timing?
Of the timing, I would agree. So if if everybody's okay with that, we can make that adjustment too. Madam Town Manager, are you making these changes as we're talking by chance? Do you want to share your screen? I'll make you the host so we can review.
Oh, no, I'm writing them down.
Oh, you're writing, okay. Only because the document's not in the Google Drive. I think there were very few changes that were made, so I would, I mean, I had no problem with the changes that were made because they were, you know, just changes in wording, not intent or. So I'm fine with that process. Now, I understand there was a discussion in the, in the meeting about potentially looking at appointing people who are already in the position, who are up for reappointment to, and I guess there was a discussion on the board about that, that reached a, if I'm not mistaken, a two to two deadlock. Was that correct? Or is this something that we want to revisit today? That's the last part that we don't have in the process is what do we do after the end of that? I mean.
Yeah, well, I caused that issue, Tom. And we thought it was best to wait till you were back.
Okay.
Or the board did, I guess. But step three, we spoke about, you know, the standing boards versus the ad hocks. I just thought it was kind of ridiculous and obviously the caucus is an indication of that and the town manager's report every week, which typically has vacancies on these boards that were just making it really difficult or just, you know, cumbersome for people who want to serve. The ad hoc or the, you know, committees like the, we use TC Pass here as building committee as a as an example, but can you imagine somebody being on that board for a year and then you just tell them, well, we don't need you anymore? This is after they just, you know, they've become acclimated, they know, they've been to all the meetings, they know what's going on on that committee. That's, you know, being a building committee, can you imagine if we just sent them on their way after a year and got somebody new every year? That just wouldn't work. And we do have, according to our policies, we have the authority to put these people on. I think even the standing committees for three, up to three years. So why do they have to send in a, well, the former talent bank form, which is renamed, I guess, annually?
By the way, they they don't, just to interrupt you there. In the new process, if you're in it, you just have to say you're willing to be put, you don't have to fill out another form. I was against that reappointment form and that was a prior selectman, many years ago, asked for that and I was against it for the very reason that you're saying. So you don't have to reapply for the job. You just tell somebody you're interested in it. You don't have to fill out another prior talent bank form.
All right, well, it says notify the board of selection in writing. Is that something?
Well, that's like, yeah, I'm just saying you're interested. Email is writing. I mean, just saying, yes, you're interested in being reappointed.
The only thing I would say about that is, let me just read this again. I I thought there was some, some text referring people or asking people to notify the town if they're not interested, which would, in other words, suffice. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe that's gone now.
Yeah, no, I don't think we, we didn't say anything in the negative.
All right. I, maybe I'm, maybe it was, maybe I read in the policy. I'm not sure. But anyways, if that was the case, if they have to notify us that they're not interested anymore, then that, in other words, that that would make that whole statement about notifying the select board in writing kind of moot because they, you know, they have no intention of leaving, so why would they notify us in writing if they're going to stay? If they notify us that they're going to leave, you know what I'm saying?
Well, they have to notify us one way or another, I think.
All right, anyway.
Ms. Adams.
Sure, I think one thing that keeps getting mentioned by Mr. Marino is that people would have to go through this every year, but it's, this applies to those whom term is expiring. So we will go through it every year, but it will be with a different group of people. So if somebody is serving for three years, they will only go through the process every three years. So it's not a yearly thing for the appointees because it it's, it's when the term is up. That's only for a certain selection of people.
Yes. I'm going to, the town manager has the revised document, so I'm going to make her the host here and she can share her screen. And then we can go over the revisions that were made next, last week.
So we also, in our discussions, we talked about the last sentence of number four, which was whether or not the list. Which was whether or not the list, the published list should clearly identify. If there's someone seeking reappointment. And as I recall that discussion, I believe Mr. Marino and Mr. Dwyer were not in support of that being there. Which then would impact some of the necessity of what comes before it. Because if if we're not going to publish, which positions are real are in which someone's seeking reappointment, to me, it makes no sense then. To even have, you know, steps two and three and so there'd just be one process by which people can just inform us. That their interest in those roles.
How does the how does the I'm not following. How does the last line of number four negate steps two and three?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is if we're not publishing a list of which positions a member's seeking reemployment. Then it would make to me, it would make sense that we publish the list of all the positions that are going to be expiring. It doesn't matter if the current members sitting in those positions are seeking reappointment because it will be published anyway. Is it possible, Heather, to scroll up a little bit so we can see one and two?
You're viewing one and two now?
Yeah.
All right, so number one seems pretty strong. Let's just do them one at a time. So that amendment changing the wording I'm fine with and. So that just says, okay, these are the these are the seats, these are the appointed seats that are becoming available because the term is expiring. So that we need a list. So I don't think any, is there anybody who's in objection to number one in any regard? Okay. So number two is. So so then the chair people of all the all the municipal bodies get to see the list. So that makes sense. And number three, those individuals who shall notify the board. Yeah, so then they're going to tell us anybody whose term is expiring. They don't have to fill out a new form. They just got to tell us they're interested in being considered for that position again. So again, I don't. None of those steps, when we get to what you're saying, Mr. Jeffries, seems to be negated by the last sentence of number four.
Well, I think I don't know if it would follow if you were not publishing a list of who's seeking reappointment.
No, just publishing a list of what seats there are.
Well, no, that's not what number four says. So number four says that we publish the list of what seats there are.
The first sentence of number, the first sentence of number four says exactly that. We're just going to publish the list. The second sentence has to do with. If we scroll down a little bit.
Can you still read it? Ready to that?
Yes.
So the first one said they'll be provided for the local public pay, the local paper for publication. To inform the public and those who might be interested in applying for the position. So there's going to be. So we're going to publish the positions that are expiring. The second sentence is the one that says, okay, we're going to give them one more piece of information, which is we're going to let them know if somebody else's is, you know, if the person who's currently in it is running for reappointment. So they're very detachable.
Yes, and I think that that's, I guess what I'm asking is maybe we may want to decide if we're going to keep that second sentence of number four. Because if we don't keep the second sentence of number four, I don't know what the value is in asking current members early on if they're seeking in a separate process, if they're looking to keep the seat. If there's going to be an open process that then starts shortly thereafter. It doesn't make a difference.
Okay, well, yeah, the timing can certainly change a bit, but. Well, I'm personally in favor of that second sentence because I think it informs people who may be interested. You know, if they want to, again, some people don't want to have contentious appointments. They're not interested in competitive appointments. And if they and they feel, again, to Mr. Marino's point, if somebody's in there, unless there's a, I'm not saying that nobody else should could apply. I think it's just courtesy to tell somebody that they are reapplying the person who's in the job because they, you know. It has been customary, not in Lunenburg, but in in the world in general of of reelections or reappointments, that if somebody has the job and they're doing a decent job. It's not easy to unseat them. Not that it's impossible and not that we are going to close the interview process, but somebody would know and some people may not want to be in that position. So I think it's an important piece of information from my standpoint. We have a chair. We have an appointed person, Madam Town Manager, Mr. Pease of the Conservation Commission. At the board's pleasure, I will, I would ask him to speak because I assume he has something pertinent on this subject, being an appointed official.
And he is unmuted.
Okay, Mr. Pease.
I would just suggest, I mean, to me, the dilemma, I've been watching these meetings. You know, select people, members of the select board, one be able to be not reappoint someone who's not doing that they're not pleased with. I mean, on the one hand, but on the other hand, you don't want to take and discourage people who've been. You know, volunteering and learning the job and all that other stuff. And my my just suggestion, consider. You know, asking people early, finding out who who's not interested in reappointment. That's your initial list. Of openings that you publish in the paper. And then you go through the reappointment process or the appointment process. And if you find that there's people you're not reappointing. Then you take, after you figure out, well, we're not going to reappoint this person. We're not happy with the job they did. Then you take and you put there, then you take and you advertise for that in the paper. You do it in two phases. One, you fill all your known vacancies. And two, after you figure out who you're going to not, if you're not going to reappoint someone. You know, then advertise that vacancy. Don't, you know, I I think you get hung up because you're trying to do it all all at the same time. Those are just my thoughts and thank you for recognizing me.
No problem. Anybody else who have any discussion on this? Ms. Adams.
Yes, thank you. I think Mr. Peace brings up a really good point. So I think it clarifies something in my mind. That going through this this process to me or creating a process is not about a desire to not reappoint people that I'm not pleased with. So I'm glad he said that because I didn't see it from that perspective. In in terms of 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 creating an avenue to displace people. Because I certainly think with with vacancies and in the amount of volunteer work the town needs. That it's important to let people continue in roles they want to serve. When this started years ago as a discussion with the select select board, which, you know, most of the members have changed since. The idea of creating a more open process and a more advertised process was more about creating accessibility to others. Or creating knowledge to others in the sense that the opportunity to serve even existed. Some of us felt as though when the basically the list was generated, the same night we were reappointing. So there would be an item on the agenda, reappointments. And there'd sort of be this pause of like rea and we do reappoint employees, you know, the the members of the police department and the building commission or so on and so forth each year. But then when it came to to these roles, especially if there had been anything within the year where people had tried to give input or contribute. There came this pause to say, we're not putting anything in this process to see or or even consider if anybody else is interested. Given that there was a Talent Bank form and people may not know what that means, we weren't really advertising that these positions really existed as opportunities to be appointed to. So when I advocate for this process and to try to find a way to open it and talk about it more, which we ultimately are doing and have done even by acknowledging it. Is to create accessibility to others. Who may be interested. So it's not really about unseating as much as it is about making sure people understand there's a an opportunity to serve. And so some of our problem with vacancies and lack of participation that we're talking about both the caucus and and in vacant roles, I feel from the lens I have. Is that some of it may be that there's barriers to participation if you're not on what you'd feel like is on the inside or in the know. There's there's a lot of barriers. And so things like this help create communication. Which increases accessibility and may actually, rather than ostracize people, it may bring more people in.
Mr. Dwyer.
I disagree with Ms. Adams, one of you. I I and it's nothing personal. I just I just disagree with it. I think the process that we're talking about will do the exact opposite of its intent. I think it will discourage volunteerism. We have three, sometimes four meetings a month. And for example, tonight, the town manager is going to read her report and there are, there's one vacancy on the architectural preservation district commission, four vacancy on the by law review committee. One vacancy on the cultural council, one vacancy on the historical mission, two vacant positions on the housing authority. One vacancy on the TCP Building Design Committee, one vacancy for the Senior Work Off Program Committee and one vacancy for the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're not running into the problem that people are, there aren't enough opportunities to volunteer for people. We're running into the problem. We don't have enough volunteers. So I tend to fall in line with Mr. Pease's recommendation that the reappointments, we should take those as reappointments and if we want to exercise authority to remove a person. For whatever reason, we we do so and then we advertise that vacancy. But again, I'm just I'm just one voice and that's my opinion.
Okay, I don't see. Well, I will say that I approach in this and always has been to try to balance. I want as many people, it's always been a thorn in my side for fifteen years or more. That those vacancies, not only do they exist today, they've always existed. It's not something new to twenty twenty one. It's not something new to the pandemic in nineteen, you know. In two thousand and five, it was the same thing. In two thousand and eight, it was the same thing. We just don't have enough volunteers. So I don't want to discourage people from running. I also don't want to appoint the people that we don't. You know, we don't feel are going to do a good job. However, never before have we talked about singling out, do a reappointment process. Where you would actually actively be voting against somebody. That puts people in a really bad position, I think. I think having an open process that you do it once, first of all, it's going to save a lot of time to readvertise twice. As was suggested, I think just adds a lot of layers and a lot of more work. And I think if we notify people that there are people for running for reappointment. People can make whatever they want of that, but they're going to run and they'll make their decision, but it won't be surprising to them that they're going to be interviewed at the same time. So I think it makes the process streamlined and I think it makes it fair and I think it gives deference to to people in, you know, who already hold the positions because they have the experience. When you interview for a job. It's hard to get somebody out who already has the job unless you have stellar qualifications or if the person seeking reappointment really has done something that really does not merit reappointment. At that point, you could just appoint somebody else. You don't have to. You don't have to actively disappoint if that's using it in the in the official term. You don't have to actively disappoint somebody. To me, this seeks the balance between those two. I think people can choose whether they want to be running up against somebody else who's running a reappointment or maybe they want to. Because we always ask people or it's commonly asked of people. If you don't get this job, is there any other vacancies that suit your needs or your interests? You know, so maybe they can make that decision beforehand. I just think this strikes a balance for both of those, the way the wording is right now. I would not be for a separate reappointment round before we get to the vacancy round or vice versa personally.
Mr. Chair, Selectman Jeffries has his hand raised.
Mr. Jeffries.
Thank you. I think when we started this process, I was very much so in agreement with Selectman Adams. His perspective and trying to make sure that we're that we're providing the most access we can to the most amount of people. But I do think that the reality is, as Mr. Dwyer said, that no one's, people aren't banging down the doors to volunteer. We have a lot of vacancies. And I think that a process that that the process that we're creating may discourage, not encourage, participation. You know, people may decide. Who knows what they'll decide, but I I I support Mr. Dwyer's perspective, which is a change from my previous opinion. I'm not opposed to a separate reappointment process and then looking at which vacancies remain and then deciding from there what to post.
Mr. Marino, do you have anything? I I can't see the whole list and I'm not host, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm just reading our policies and as I pointed out in my notes to you. That whatever we this board decides to do with this reappointment policy. We may have to make some change changes in section two point oh seven of our policies to to respond to our, you know, to the changes. I was just reading it there. I I think I highlighted some of it and sent it to you, but. At any rate, it was something about them filling out a talent bank, talent bank form, but I don't see that in our policies. It must have been. It was probably part of the old reappointment policy that I was thinking of, but.
Yeah, it was the original. Yeah.
But, you know, in in the appointment policy, it says that reappointments shall not be considered automatic based on an evaluation of the appointee's past contributions to the board committee of position. It's part of the annual appointment process to tell them, and they're asking comments whose terms will expire in June thirty. The fill out, it does say that. Fill out a modified talent bank form regarding their desire for appointment and description of the past contribution. So if we, whatever we decide to do, we're going to have to go in and change that because that's in our appointment.
What where is where is that? Where are you reading that from?
Selectman's policy, section two point oh seven on page twenty eight.
What and what is the what is the header of that policy?
Appointments.
I I know, but that this is what we're doing. This is the replacement of that policy. What we're working on is a replacement of that.
No, I I thought that was a procedure. That's what I asked you in my email. That's what was confusing. You're creating a procedure for reappointments, but there's a policy for appointments that may contradict that.
I misunderstood your point. Okay, I I get your point. Well, obviously, if we choose something and we have to redo the policy, we can do that.
All right.
I'd rather focus on the process and then we can go back and and change the policy to fit it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Selectman Adams.
Yes, Ms. Adams.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to sort of summarize and make sure I'm understanding some of the moving pieces here. Now, I know in your board comment at the beginning of the meeting, you talked about how important it was to have as many people as possible. You know, seeking contested elections, so on and so forth, to bring opportunity conversation. With these appointed positions, they're filling, you know, governmental positions that are making important decisions, but they're appointed by us. So the only I I there's something here that I'm confused about in the recommendations of Mr. Dwyer and maybe now Mr. Jeffries. And that are are they suggesting, and I just want to clarify, that once you're appointed to something like the Conservation Commission. If you choose to keep it, it's yours for life? Are we circumventing the process for anybody else having those seats?
I don't think that's what they're saying. Absolutely not. They're saying that there's a separate round of you give those people an up or down vote separately. That's what I. They're saying that there's, there's a separate round of you give those people an up or down vote separately. That's what I'm understanding. Please correct me if I have that mistaken, Mr. Dwyer. I thought that they automatically get it. You could vote them down and say, no, not.
E- even in the current policy, it says reappointment shall not be considered automatic, but shall be based on an evaluation of the appointee's past contribution to the board committee or position. And it's without, within our jurisdiction to evaluate that, and I think we should. But I don't think we make a competitive process. I think we take that appointment and if there's cause uh uh to keep that person on and they, they want to, they want to volunteer, we just say yes, by all means, but if for some circumstance, we feel that that person should be removed, then we remove them. That's all.
But you, but you're saying it's two rounds. They get their own hearings for those people first.
Correct.
Chair, if I may respond?
Ms. Adams.
Sure. Um, honestly, um, I think the, the process has to happen concurrently. Um, it, it makes me feel absolutely confused and actually extremely like nervous to imagine somebody in front of us who wants to see and then to say no. And then to maybe not have anybody else even interested in it. If, if, i- it changes the whole dynamic. Um, if there's no volunteers, one volunteer, two volunteers, and I think it has to corral at the same time to take each individual who's been appointed and to just say, you are worthy of being kept. We would like to dismiss you and to dismiss somebody in, in the absence of extremely good reason, w- without doing it at the same time of looking at multiple candidates. I think the, the best process and, and granted, it's usually probably going to be nobody or one person, but occasionally there are appointment process um processes where there are more than one candidate. Um, I've, I've been there. It was an appointment to an elected position. Um, so it was a temporary appointment. So it's, you know, it's, it's different. Um, but it, it, it happens concurrently. So then the board makes a choice. Um, I, I don't understand how it could be a two-step process because you're saying yes and no without connecting it to any other um uh candidates or interested parties. I can't make sense of how that process wouldn't be extremely unsettling to um potentially dismiss somebody without knowing if there is anybody viable to take their seat. I guess I'm just having trouble even understanding, you know, how or why that would be a new process.
So what you're proposing is rather than tell someone that, you know what, based on your performance, uh, we're not going to reappoint you. Thank you for your service. You'd much rather say um you know, you've done a great job, but this person's better than you, so come on board.
No, no, that's not what I said.
I mean, that's, that's I don't know. There, in my view, the people who serve on these boards are, they're, they're uh town employees. And it's our duty as the appointing uh authority to evaluate these their performance and, and say yea or nay on whether they continue. And I understand your point. I just disagree with the approach. That's all.
I would say that if we took out appointed, I mean, so in, in an effort to make it again as A, open, B, transparent, and C, fair as possible, if we took out the word appointed and said elected, I mean, it would almost be like having an election run where all the incumbents run and, and you see if people vote for them. And then if there are not enough people vote for them, then you give it up to everybody else. I don't, I don't understand the, the two-tier rule. I just, I, I don't understand the logic of the two-tier rule. And, and to your point.
Okay, so look, look at it not as an elected position, look at it as an employee position. And if you were working in a job and every year, year you went into your uh review and you said, okay, you're doing a great job, but we have this other candidate. I, we want you to tell us why, you know, we shouldn't fire you and hire this person instead, even though you've been doing a great job.
Uh, well, I, I would say that the major difference in employment would be that, uh, well, there's lots of differences, but I mean uh the fact that that has draws a salary and people are, you know, by law, you don't have a term on an employee. So, and people do that, by the way, all the time. So they, they don't have people compete against it, but you know, people get fired all the time who are doing a good job in bad companies. So I guess, I mean, yes, you know, people vie for the job because that's not the nature of the position. So employment isn't about, isn't about that you know you have an X amount of time, but let's pop out contractors. I mean, contractors are a better idea. At six months, you may think contracts is doing a great job, but you choose not to rehire them or hire anybody, or you find a better contractor for a job. I mean, that happens all the time too. So, you know, there's arguments for all of this. I just think that, and again, to make it streamlined and fair, I don't want to go through two processes to do this. Um, because I don't see the merit of that. The, the, the person running for reappointment or asking to be reappointed already has the upper hand. To make them go singly against the board, it's going to be very difficult for people on the board to vote against people. No, we don't want you. It's a lot easier to say, yes, I want this person more than I want you. Not that you're doing a bad job. I think they do a better job. I think that's a little more palatable than saying directly to somebody, no, we don't have anybody else yet, but we're not reappointing you. I just don't see that happening. Myself, I mean, I just.
I would have no hesitation doing that, but uh.
Me neither.
I can I get a suggestion, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I can't see you because I'm looking at five documents at once here.
Yes, Mr. Marino.
I think we're overthinking this whole thing, to be quite honest with you, because I, I keep reading our policy on appointments. And notwithstanding the fact it says, keeps bringing up, bringing up that subject of uh talent bank forms. It's essentially what we're talking about right now. The only thing the appointment procedure should have in it is the dates that Elena alluded to. Because this, this policy lays out every other aspect of what we're talking about. It, it basically, so we're, in other words, we're kind of reinventing the wheel, so to speak, if we go through with this. I mean, we need it. We need a, we need a procedure, but the procedure is just dates, when all this happens, when it goes to the paper and so on and so forth, because the the appointment policy lays out every other aspect of it. It says when the town manager is supposed to advertise it, or not supposed, not a date, but that she should advertise it and so on and so forth, if you're reading. So let me make a suggestion. I, I think everybody ought to, well, let's skip this again for another week if we can. Everybody ought to read two oh seven. And then think about what we're doing as a procedure based on whatever dates uh is, as Elaine alluded to are probably the most feasible.
Ms. Adams.
Um, sure. Thank you for that, Mr. Marino, in the sense that if there is a policy, then maybe the core problem is that we haven't been following it and then we can improve it with a procedure. So I think we're heading in the right direction by acknowledging what is there and how we can make it better. Um, and then you stole some words that there are some parts of this that are being overthought. And for me, it's simply that these appointed positions, when people are appointed to them, they are appointed to a term. They're not knighted for life or whatnot. Everybody knows when we read our motions and such, there's a term to these appointments uh till such and such twenty twenty two. And so these are appointments for a term. People are asked to serve something for, say, three years. You're appointed to a three-year term. And I think we really have to, for me, focus on the fact that they're being given this opportunity for a term. And then there's usually comes a point, like with election, where you have to ask again, may I serve another term? May I continue? Um, and that's what I think was, was trying to be done. And, and if we already had a policy, we weren't completely um following or needed to add dates to um. Um, I, I think it's just, these are terms. And I think what I would really like to state in terms of some of the things I've heard in the discussion is that no citizen has ownership over a position that they've been appointed to. And I think we've come close to suggesting that they do. And I think having um this discussion and, and set dates and talk about it openly, that there's terms up for reappointment and other people may apply. We've, we've never really made a formal announcement that other people can participate. And so I think we've had this very strange environment where people aren't serving a term, they're owning a position. And that's what I, that, that's what I hope we get away from.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marino.
Uh, in response to Katie's comments, uh, I think the, this appointment policy addresses her concerns about that. About those issues. So I, again, I, I think we ought to go back to the drawing boards, read this first. Uh, it's it, 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 um, you know, it, it uh indicates that, you know, it's that we have, in other words, we have to make the appointments um uh that are applicable to state law too, which is the terms cannot exceed three years. Uh, not allowed by mass general laws, right, in this policy? So I, I think it addresses some of these concerns. And I just think we ought to go back and reread this and and maybe take a little more time. And I, I honestly think that this procedure is just based on the dates that are convenient for the town manager, the uh and anybody that, you know, uh has anything to do with trying to get these appointments done at a time every year.
Well, I would comment, uh, I'll make a few comments here because uh I'm just trying to temper this. Uh, going back and reading this from the beginning, that was great. When I asked people who wanted to put this on this, nobody said that from the beginning. And when I asked people to submit what they wanted the process to be, no one said, well, we should just have dates, there's, because we already have a policy. So everybody went through with this. We went through a whole round of people submitting to me. Then we went for a whole round of talking about each of the things. And now in the third meeting, two and a half hours into this, over, you know, overall time, now we're saying, well, let's go back to the beginning because it was working, but it clearly wasn't working. So I didn't want to address this. This was, I was asked to address this. I think the way we've been doing it has been fine all along, but I'm not willing to spend another two hours or two and a half hours over the course of three meetings going through this again. I'm just not doing it. So, I mean, if people think that this policy is fine and the policy, all we need is dates, I'm willing to do that. But I'm not willing to just go around in circles. This is, this is like too much of the stuff in town. It's, it's like going, it's like talking about the primary school and talking about the TCP. It just gets to be dizzying that in the third meeting of going over something that I thought we were in the end, near the end of is now we're just going to throw it up in the air. Let's start at the beginning again. So if that expressed frustration, then I, at least I did it correctly.
Mr.
Who gave it away?
Procedure. We've not had a procedure in all the years I've been involved. And so I think the work on this and talking about it is worthwhile. And I think we could apply this procedure to the policy. I don't necessarily think they're going to conflict because primarily what we have in front of us is assigning dates to things that will support the process of um following the policy. Does that work?
I will, anything works for me at this point.
I think we have agreement that we're going to be publishing a list in the, in the paper and that people will know that these positions are there. I mean, I, you know, I, I know that there are things that we are agreeing to. It's just what we're disagreeing on is what do we, what do we do with the people who are currently office holders? Um, and I think, you know, we, we all presented different plans. I do think that, you know, there's a diversity of opinion here. I mean, I, I, I hear what Selectman Adams is saying. I don't know if it's a fair translation of what I'm hearing, but I, I hear what she's saying. And I think that it's a, it, she's interpreting, she's interpreted what we've said. And, and I think we have to listen to that. That, you know, that what Mr. Dwyer has contributed, what I've contributed, um, I think what I hear back is, you know, critical feedback that even though I disagree with it, I think it still matters. Um, you know, sometimes when we don't reach agreement on things, I think, a- as you know, I'm, I'm a believer that sometimes we just leave things alone. If, you know, if, if we're, because I mean, I'm going back and forth where I've been on this, you know, but we seem to be, no matter how we go, it's got to be a three to two vote, in my opinion, or, or, or in some kind of way. And maybe we shouldn't make policies that are that close.
And Mr. Chair, um, if I may join your frustration, I was confused last week and I don't know if you listened to the meeting, but this is one of our goals, was to do this. And so I'm confused that there's so much contention in achieving a goal. Do you have the language for the goal we set? Because as we worked on this last week, I'm thinking, my goodness, this was a goal. We wouldn't have set it as a goal to improve this if we were in such disagreement on it.
I think it's fair to say, though, Selectman Adams, that, you know, two of the members were, what, two weeks into their term when we created these goals? I mean, so it really was three of us that were, for the most part, opining about what we thought the goals were. And the newest members, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but as a new member to a board is create goals in a reappointment process that they never really were a part of in the first place. I mean, I think that, I think we got to be realistic about whose goal it was.
But we all voted it in to be, we vote, we actually looked over the goals and then voted them as our goals and edited them. And so I don't understand why we would put forth effort to make goals, to put effort into something that we're not hoping to achieve. It is all very discouraging.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marino.
I, I don't see it as a stonewall on a goal at all. As a matter of fact, I put a lot of effort into um this particular goal. But um I just think it's wrong to, so what? We have to go back to the drawing boards? How many times we do that? You know, don't send the rocket up if it's too cold out. You know what I'm saying? We go back to the drawing boards, we go back, so what? Takes a little longer, so what? We'll achieve the goal. It might take longer. That's just business. That's the way it goes. I don't, you know, instead of what, what, so what do we do? We just submit it and right or wrong, we submit it anyway? I don't get that. So that's my frustration. You didn't notice.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think there's enough to go around. I, I certainly agree that about that. I mean, again, my, my point is that I think Selectman Adams is correct in saying that it was a goal. And, you know, so we should be approaching this. I, I'm, I'm, I'm just amazed that in, in like the, seems to be the eleventh hour here that we're, you know, if we're stuck on one thing of what to do with reappointments, then let's hash it out. If it comes to a three to two vote, then that's fine. But if we agree on everything else, as Mr. Jeffrey says, then why would we want to start over to begin with? Because eventually we're going to rebuild it. How many different ways can you appoint people? I mean, this is not like, this is not like building a house where there's a million different designs. There's only a certain amount of time and a certain amount of process to do this.
The, the fact of the matter is, I brought up the fact that this policy or this procedure is in some way, uh, it's some, in some ways uh contrary to our own policy. I brought that a long time ago and then I mentioned it in my email to you and I, I believe some of the language I might have copied and put it in my notes when I sent it. So I, this isn't uh witching our uh revelations. I knew this right from the get-go.
Yes, I just, I understand that, but I also would say that I, if I, I'm almost sure I said it, but I'll, I'll leave the chance that maybe I didn't. Is that the policies are our policies. We have the ability to change our policies. So we were saying, let's do the procedures and then whatever doesn't fit in the policy will change the policy. Because one, one of the things that we taught, you talked about, I agree with is that I don't want people who seeking reappointment to fill out a reappointment form. I never agreed with that process to begin with. People took it as a, many people took it as a joke. You know, and we got to see some of the things that came in on the reappointment form. So I'm, I don't want to make those things. That's part of our policy in there too. So we can make the process what we want and modify that policy to fit it so everything fits in together seamlessly. I don't think we have to do one or the other. We can do them at the same time. We could do one after the other and adopt them both at the same time. So I'm not worried about contradictions in the policy because it's not like I'm going to leave that alone. So we can do them simultaneously, concurrently, together, wherever you want to, you know, word it. I just want to make it streamlined so people are, are, are okay with the process. That's what I'm interested in.
Well, that's been my opinion right from the start. Streamline, so nobody's discouraged.
Right. So let me ask, let me ask the board in a straw poll, is the process the way it exists today okay with everybody? Do anybody, does anybody have objections to what we've already been doing for like? Because I don't know that, aside from that reappointment form, I don't know that these policies or processes have been changed. Because I don't know that, aside from that reappointment form, I don't know that these policies or processes have been changed in a long time. Is the current process fine?
Um, I think, as I said, the part that, that bothered me the most last few years is the first we've, we discuss. The appointments is usually the night we're making them, which leaves no opportunity for discussion, contemplation. Or alternative participation.
I have to pull up the current policy and look at it. And I, I mean, I, I read this last year, but I haven't looked at it recently. But I, I mean, I think that we were in agreement that some things needed to change, that we were discussing and talk about, and I think we're just not in agreement yet.
Like we have never had a meeting, um, since I've been involved prior to appointments where we discuss. Um, any information from appointees or who's interested. We just get a list. Of the reappointments to make and we just wave them on and make them. Um, so I think there, there's, we basically don't do anything. And I think that leaves any room for improvement.
Okay, we're not going to get anywhere on this. So I'm going to say, I'm going to gavel this one closed for right for tonight. And I'm back being host again. No, I'm not. So we'll go to town manager report. And COVID-19 update.
Are we going back to?
Uh, we'll see after your report. Did Heather freeze? Yes. Okay, hold on. Okay.
Warrant article conditions.
Okay, so I'm. And now she's dropped. Okay, you dropped out. So welcome back. Oh, we have to get you, uh, unmuted again. There you go.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
So I'll try to make this as quick as possible. Uh, announcement of existing vacancies, although Selectman Dwyer already read them. I'll read them again. The Architectural Preservation District Commission has one vacancy. The Bylaw Review Committee has four vacancies. Cultural Council has one vacancy. Historical Commission has one vacancy. Housing Authority has two vacancies. The T C P Building Design Committee has one vacancy. The Senior Work Off Program Committee has one vacancy and the Zoning Board of Appeals has one associate position vacancy. People can fill out the application forms that can be found on the town website and complete them and send them back to the select board's office. Update on the old primary school property. I asked the D P W Director to solicit quotes for a survey for the old primary school property. And it turns out that Dulles and Roy Civil Engineering Group had conducted fieldwork. About 10 to 12 years ago, uh, for a developer who was looking to purchase the property from the town. And they can update the existing conditions plan for us for $750. So we're able to cover this under the facilities budget in fiscal 21. So there will be, uh, not be a need to include this cost in the article for design services at the annual town meeting. So that was good news. Um, the D P W Director is also securing quotes for full landscape design of the old primary school property. And this funding will be part of the article and will be recommended to be taken out of free cash.
Okay, so that answered my question, which is, okay, the article is still going to have money associated with it, a substantial amount for the design.
Yes.
To save $750. Okay.
Correct. Um, which would normally, if we needed a full survey, would be, you know, three to $5,000.
Gotcha. Okay.
Uh, other updates from the D P W Director. The new dump truck that was approved as part of the fiscal 21 capital plan is registered and on the road. The spring paving schedule is being worked out by the D P W Director. But will most likely include Whalen Road from Electric Ave to Summer Street. Electric Ave from the traffic lights to the Leominster Line. Prospect Street from Laurel Lane to Leominster Road. A leveling course to Townsend Harbor Road and a leveling, leveling course to Burridge Street from Page Street to Flat Hill Road. Bids for the Complete Streets project are due April 1st. That project will be underway, um, thereafter. Update on the Continuity of Operations Plan, which was, uh, one of my goals, um, part of one of my goals. Action two under goal three. The UMass Collins Center is wrapping up getting all the foundation data for the Continuity of Operations Plan. And I will have a draft by November, uh, sorry, not November, April 9th. This will be reviewed with the department heads and a final draft should be completed by the end of April. The final plan will ultimately, ultimately be reviewed and needs to be adopted by the select board. Update from PAC on running hybrid meetings. Public access is encountering audio issues when testing out. In-person meetings, um, and broadcasting a Zoom meeting at the same time. The issue they are having is in the audio for Zoom is connected to the same mixer as the microphones. So they're currently in the process of coming up with an audio fix and we'll keep the updated, we'll keep the board updated. Update on an earmark for the old, for the, not old, the new primary school fire alarm upgrade. After reaching out to our legislators, they put me in touch with the state agency that the $25,000 earmark we, we received for the primary school fire alarm upgrade. And after speaking with that office, these funds would have to be spent by June 30th, 2021. The only way we can get an extension is through a vote of the legislature, either in a supplemental budget bill or through the fiscal 22 state budget. I have emailed all three of our legislators to request they file this either as part of a supplemental budget bill, which there is none pending right now. Or through the fiscal 22 state budget process, whichever is sooner. So as we have been told by the school facilities director, we cannot do this project without funding in place for the entire cost of the project, which is 127,000. And I think I covered everything but the meetings. This was out of order. Uh, the, in other meetings, the T C P, T C P Building Design Committee has a meeting. Tomorrow night at 5:30 PM through Zoom. Conservation has a meeting, um, public hearing. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, March 17th at 7:00 PM through Zoom. The school committee has a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 PM through Zoom. The school superintendent is presenting her budget for approval by the school committee. The library board of trustees meeting, I guess, has been postponed to the 25th. And I'll be attending the finance committee meeting on Zoom on Thursday, March 18th at 7:00 PM. Uh, with presentations from the Leunberg School Superintendent and discussion on warrant articles that require an appropriation. And those are all the updates in my town manager report.
Any questions for the top, Ms. Adams?
Um, sure. Um, not so much a question, it's a comment. It jogged my memory. Um, I did, or we did attend, um, the community outreach meeting last week. I think it was more successful than the first one. Um, bit redundant. I think that's the third time I heard the same slideshow, which was about over an hour's worth of it. I wish it was a little bit more interactive. Um, because a lot of it was a presentation of opinions. But luckily at the end, um, there were three or four. Uh, community members that did engage and ask questions, which was a huge improvement to the zero participation at the other one. So thank you for the efforts in getting them to put on the meeting again and getting the meeting to be recorded and everything. I think it was. Well worth the while and a, a big improvement having attended both of them. Um, so, thank you.
Welcome. I think it went a lot better than the first one as well.
Thanks.
Okay, COVID-19 update.
Um, for weekly updates, um, from the Board of Health. The total number of positive cases as of March 12th was 665 and one death. The state report shows 642 cases as of March 9th. This is an increase of 21 cases from the previous week. In regards to the regional vaccination site requests, Senator Cronin. Will be participating in a virtual meeting with Secretary Sutter's, Senator Eldridge and the Nishoba Associate Boards of Health this Wednesday. Regarding a Route 2 Beltway Regional Vaccination Site at Devon's. Any news on this request, I'll make known as soon as it's, is known. Updates from the state as of March 11th, there's 563,983 cases. 16,218 deaths and 17,129,876 patients have been tested to date. There is, um, uh, when it went live Friday is now a pre-registration system. Um, they, the state partnered with Google Cloud Team and launched this pre-registration system. Um, it's accessed through the state site, mass.gov COVID vaccine. And so this allows everyone to sign up. And you just type in your information as far as if you're a part of an eligible group. Um, and you'll be notified. You get a text message. If you sign up, uh, to receive either through your phone or you can sign up through email as well. I'm going to skip down, um, because a lot of that's redundant. State distribution of vaccines. Last week, the state received a constrained supply of. About 155,000 first doses, first doses and second dose allocations this week were divided. Among providers as follows. Mass vaccination sites, 83,000. To hospital providers, both private and public, 79,000 to regional collaboratives. Which there are 12 regional collaboratives, 38,000 doses. To community health centers, 25,000 and to local boards of health to complete their second dose appointments. Um, because as you've been notified before, they withdrew all, um, the allotment for, uh, local boards of health. So this is to finish those original, um, appointments to, for people to get their second dose. And that was 25,000. Weekly allocations are subject to change based on federal availability, demand from providers and obligations to meet second doses. Providers have 10 days to use their doses. For federal doses, in addition to the state allocation, the federal government distributes vaccines to CVS health sites. As part of the federal retail pharmacy partnership, as well as to certain mass federally qualified community health centers. These quantities fluctuate on a weekly basis and are not counted as part of the state's weekly allocation. Last week, 95,000 first and second doses have been allocated to the retail pharmacy program. And 19,000 Johnson and Johnson doses have been allocated to the federally qualified health centers. Individuals looking to book appointments across any of these providers should visit the mass.gov COVID vaccine site. And I'm going to head down to dedicated educator vaccination days. Um, last week talked about the, uh, that the state was opening up, um, vex, vaccination sites. Specific to, for educators, K through 12 educators, childcare workers and K through 12 school staff. Um, there's 170 public vaccination sites for, um, this eligible group. And there's dedicated dates as of Saturday, March 27th. Saturday, April 3rd, Saturday, April 10th and Sunday, April 11th. Um, to go on to the Phase Four Step One Guidance. So we talked about this at a previous meeting too. This is, was just issued, um, by the Department of Public Health. Um, regarding what Phase Four Step One will entail. Um, so this is specific to indoor and outdoor events. And it covers, um. Indoor and outdoor event spaces, ballrooms, private clubs and party rooms, public places like parks and private residences. An event that is held for a primary purpose of watching performance must follow the Theaters and Performance Venues Guidance, which is on the, uh, state website. Exhibition and convention halls may reopen as part of Phase Four Step One. And must follow the, these sector-specific COVID-19 workplace safety rules for indoor and outdoor events. The following phase four enterprises must continue to remain closed until Phase Four Step Two. This includes amusement parks, theme parks, indoor and outdoor water parks and ball pits. Street festivals and parades and agricultural festivals. Road races and other large outdoor organized amateur or professional group athletics events. Bars, dance clubs and nightclubs. Beer gardens, breweries, wineries and distillates, not providing seated food service. Uh, there's a number of social distancing requirements. Uh, I'll highlight up a few. The host of an indoor event at private residence must limit the number of attendees at all times to no more than 10 persons. Uh, the host of an outdoor event at private residence must limit attendees at all times to no more than 25. And, um, the host of an indoor event, which is, is. And space available for lease or a public setting such as public parks must limit the number of attendees at all times to no more than 100. And for outdoor events, held at an event venue, uh, more in a public setting, uh, there must be no more than 150 persons. And I'll leave it at that. And this will, I'll put this up on the website as soon as I can.
Okay. Any questions for the town manager on the COVID-19 updates?
No, I'm just glad they haven't brought back ball pits. I never felt really good about those.
Uh, so. We have the ability, if we want to go through some of the warrant articles and give recommendations if the board so chooses. Okay, we're doing it. There we go. Since there's no voicing of any opinion. So let's go to the warrant articles. We're going to use the draft one that's in the Google Drive. And anything. Anything that we can, we'll offer. A recommendation on. So A. Acceptance here at the town will hear or an, and or accept regular written reports. Okay, so we'll do this. If somebody has anything, just say move to recommend approval and then somebody will second it. We'll just go through. So we'll just say that. Ms. Adams. Let's say, Mr. Moreno moved to approve this article.
Recommend it second.
It was seconded. I'm just doing a roll call of it.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Um, yeah, aye.
Mr. Dwyer. Oh, Mr. Dwyer is muted.
Aye.
Mr. Moreno.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
An aye for me. B, um. Revolving funds, as noted in the table. This is a pretty straightforward one. Are there any changes from this from last year?
No, same revolving funds and same spending limits.
Okay.
I vote that we, um, recommend Article B.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Moreno.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And aye for me. Recommended approval. All right. C, uh, we don't have the number, so we can't go to C. D. We don't have the final number on the budget, do we?
Yeah, I would hold off on that, um, article.
Without a number, I'm going to hold off on it. Anything that says it's sum of money, but doesn't tell us the sum of money, we're not going to.
And capital plan as well.
Okay, so let's go to F. Well, again, transfer sums, we can't do that.
I'm down a I. Actually, I'm down a J. They're all.
A, H, I, J. Okay, so none of these have. L.
L the amount.
L amount is not gonna change. Um, that's a hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars for, um, the town and six hundred and fifty-six dollars from the sewer commission deposit into the OPEB trust fund.
Okay, and that's pretty standard that amounts, right? It's always in the hundred and fifty, seventy range or something?
It follows, um, the hundred and eighty thousand four eighteen follows our financial policy on deposits, ten percent of the previous year's certified dash. And that six fifty-six from the sewer, that's, um, been the number that they've deposited the last couple years.
Well, the six fifty-six is clearly my breaking point. I can't, I can't approve the six hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Is that different than CC, Heather?
The article itself.
Yeah, CC is the six hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so that one, we can, which we did last year, we can consolidate.
Alright, thirty-one articles, alright.
Yes, those two articles can be consolidated into one.
Is it official? Do we have to vote to pass over CC?
No, we're just gonna, we're just not gonna print it. We're just gonna put them both into one. We'll just put it into one OPEB article.
Okay, then I would make a motion that we recommend article L in combination with article, um, CC, given that the amounts that it'll read are one hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and eighteen and six hundred and fifty-six.
About a second. Alright, Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And aye for me. Uh, do we know what the sum is to operate the solid waste disposal?
No, we are, um, that is going out to bid.
Okay.
At least so.
Water Enterprise, we don't probably have a number for that either.
I would, can I ask a question on explaining the Water Enterprise Fund?
Yeah, so that consists, there's a, a very small portion of town that's separate from the water district. It's, um, like the tri-town area. There's about seven, um, accounts essentially. So typically, that's, um, twenty-five thousand is what we usually have to operate. So it, uh, we um, bill those customers and we pay, um, for the water usage for, um, from Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh, I believe. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, oh, uh, again, that's gonna require money. So are all these, are we gonna have money to vote on on the thirtieth? On some of these, because that's how we get recommendations. Otherwise, we're all gonna be remaining at town meeting.
Yes, so that, um, I can tell you in a second, have the exact amount. It's the same amount that we're saving from the holiday, um, premium, premium. And it's, I think, three sixty-nine and some odd dollars. One second.
Somebody hitting the jackpot on their slot machine or something?
If we can skip her, though, I'd get back to you on that.
Alright, so then we go to the fifteen thousand dollars for the cemetery commission article.
I move to approve P.
Recommend approval, okay. Have a second?
Second.
Alright, let's go around the other way. Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
And aye for me. Okay, rescinding money from previous borrowing articles, mainly the feasibility study of the high school. So it's rescinding seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I move to approve, uh, Q. Recommend approval for Q.
Okay, Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Dwyer.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
And aye for me. Okay, money to support public access cable. Have they submitted their budget yet?
Yes, um, again, I can get that further.
No, I mean, we can, we can judge all these. Uh, we can wait till the thirtieth. I mean, if you have them, fine, but I mean, I don't, we don't have to put them in here.
Mr. Try, I think you stick R.
Aye, yes. Oh, rescinding, uh, that was the good one. Rescinding thirty-eight million dollars that we didn't spend. So yeah, rescinding the thirty-eight million four hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars from the building of the Lunenburg Middle High School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hey, uh, Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
And an aye for me.
And just, we're not, we're saying sometimes to approve, but just to
Recommend approval, yeah.
Should be saying that we're voting to recommend them.
Yes.
Approval will happen later.
Alright.
Nope, I'm just weird like that.
We don't have, we don't have the authority to approve it anyway, so it's only recommending approval, yes. Uh, so we don't have money for the old primary schools, so we gotta keep that out.
It's super excited we can get the surveying. That's great, Heather.
Yep.
Really good news.
Uh, U is the one I told Michael that I would provide. We can discuss it. I'll provide it in advance of next week's meeting, so we can talk about it and get the final wording. Uh, do we need to have V? Isn't V covered by number, by letter A?
No.
We haven't devoted to hear reports from committees. That's A, so why don't we hear from them then? We don't have to have another article just for them unless they need to be special.
A is the annual, um, recurring article, and specifically, I think that article is designed so if um, people did not submit an annual report for the yearly annual report, it could fall under that article. But I, um, this is the same, it's the same article we had at the special town meeting for the
We believe we need another article, sure, why not?
I mean, A, we can, when we talk about consent calendar, that can be part of the consent calendar.
But A does says regular written reports, and not that this is irregular, but it's its own thing.
In the past, it's always meant reports from committees, regardless of standing or not. But anyway, it doesn't matter. We need a V anyway.
And I think it, um, with sequence, with what is W right now, is important to hear the report and then to the next article.
I have a question, I have a question on these, though. So they say that they're submitted by the TCP Design Committee, but as I recall, they were recommended by the TCP Design Committee. They were submitted by the Select Board.
Yeah, we're accepting them. They've asked for us, and unless somebody objects here, or a majority of us object, we're gonna put it on there.
No, I'm saying, does, does, when it says submitted by TCP, and when that goes to print, should it say that, or should it say submitted by Select Board? Does not matter.
We didn't submit it. They submitted it.
Uh, last meeting, we approved it.
Yeah, you approved it. I, I understand that, I mean, and, and in the end, does any of that matter, really?
I interpreted last meeting as, um, the board, um, agreeing that they would go on the warrant, that there would be no objection to take them off after the warrant closed. That's how I, yeah.
I recommend approval for B.
Alright, Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
And me, aye. So W, we don't have money. We don't have a number, so. X. It's the planning board two-family, the dreaded two-family dwelling rule. Any position on that?
I recommend approval for X.
Second.
Second. Did you second it, Ms. Adams?
I did.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
And aye for me. The off-street parking and loading area warrant article. I personally would like to hear if there's any discussion on this. It's pretty extensive. I'd like to hear if anybody, as one member, I'd like to hear from, if anybody else has anything to add to this at the meeting.
I've watched several meetings of this, um, amazing amount of detail into parking, and it goes into like convention centers and things, so it's, it's things you wouldn't even think that we may or may not have. We are prepared to assign parking quantities.
Yeah, I mean, it seems, it seems reasonable. I just don't have the, I, I don't have the background to recommend approval or not without hearing what objections might be, so that's the only reason I feel it.
I'm okay. I mean, I also watched some of these meetings on this one. I thought they did a great job putting this together, but I'm comfortable deferring to town meeting for this.
Is everybody okay with that?
I have no objection.
I'm okay with it.
So we're gonna defer on that one. Defer to town meeting. Z, that's the APR for Pierce's Christmas Tree Farm.
That would come out of free cash.
Okay.
Alright, I would vote that we recommend approval for the current article Z.
A second. Okay. Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And aye for me. Okay, AA, we don't have funds. BB, is, is that the exact number? Thirty thousand, okay, so thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-three cents into the sewer capital reservation, reserve stabilization fund.
Recommend approval for BB.
Second.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
And aye for me. We took care of CC already. DD, uh, we're gonna wait to hear back what they do with this, so we're not gonna do anything on that. E, E is a citizen's petition, so I'm not making any recommendations on that till town meeting. And the same thing with FF. What is FF looking to do? They wanna add a an area into the sewer zone. I'd wanna hear what the sewer commission had to say about that.
Uh, we wanna go back to
The health one?
Yes, that amount is
What is the num, what is the, do you know the letter?
It's O, O, yeah. It's three hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Okay.
Move to recommend approval for O.
Hold a second.
Okay.
Alright, uh, Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And aye for me. So that's everything we have. We're not recommending disapproval on anything. Can we put something in there that we can recommend disapproval? Anything. We'll find out. Okay, so I think we have everything, and so anything that we have for next meeting, so we're not having a meeting on the twenty-third, we're having a meeting on the thirtieth. Yes, okay.
Is on March twenty-fifth, so anyone that wants to tune into that, the finance the finance committee's public hearing is March twenty-fifth at seven PM.
Uh, and that is next week from Thursday, right? Okay. Excellent. Okay, uh, any public comment from the public? Looking eagerly for our public to raise their hand. Seeing none. Any public comment from the board?
Oh, we got a hand.
Mr. P. There he is. He raced to his computer. Mr. P, you're on.
There we go. Bobby's loving when we're being court, um. Five, five years ago, I became interested in the work of the Conservation Commission. So, um, I went to meetings for four months as an associate member to learn, you know, about the commission. And then a vacancy came up and I applied. Uh, and I was the only applicant and I was appointed. And then I served on the commission for three years. You know, went to lots of meetings, uh, went to site, sight walks. Um, and at the end of three years, you know, uh, I was asked, you know, do I want the job again? And I filled out a reappointment form. And at that time, there were three people up for reappointment. Um, and, uh, I filled out my reappointment form, sends it in, and I asked, do I have to go to the meeting? And they said, no, you don't have to go to the meeting. So I'm sitting at home, I'm watching the TV, and I see on the TV, um, you know, the selectmen are considering the reappointments, and, uh, one of the select, and, uh, one of the select boards members said, uh, oh, I, I see we have, you know, there's three openings, there's three applicants here, so I guess that'll make it easy. You know, and one, and one of the applicants, you know, was, was, uh, an associate, another associate member at the time. And I thought, wow, I'm not gonna get reappointed because I didn't go to the meeting. Um, so I jumped in my car, raced down there, you know, and spoke, and I got reappointed. Um, but I, I just hope that when you think about the reappointment process, you, you put yourself in the shoes of the volunteer, you know, who spent a lot of time, you know, learning the job, you know, trying to do a good job. Um, and, you know, and, and think about, you know, how, how is it gonna impact the volunteer? How are they gonna feel about their volunteer commitment? You know, by the way we treat them, you know, during the reappointment process. Um, but thank you so much. Good evening.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? Any public comment from the board?
Um, sure.
Ms. Adams.
Um, I wanna thank again the, um, the previous speaker. I do recall that night, um, where there, there were four people and, and it, it, it was sort of chaotic and hectic and unsettling, and so hopefully from all different ways, as maybe we can take in more, more personal input and see that the, the process of communicating about that night, um, if we work on this procedure correctly, may have helped that evening. Um, you know, the, the fact that he was only there because he realized this was occurring because he was watching it is, is definitely not, not a good process. Um, so more advertising, more talking, more communicating. Um, I, I, I think there's definitely opportunity to, um, have a better process. Um, so I, I guess it's good that we are working on it more and, and looking at all different circumstances. We all have a different lens, but maybe the product will, will help everyone.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the board?
I just had a short comment to make, and
Sure.
I hope Bob is still, is still listening, because I happen to hold Bob in high regard, and I think he's a outstanding member of the conservation. Committee. And this is exactly the situation that we should work to try to prevent from happening again, because had he not got reappointed, I think it would have been a huge loss. So thank you, Bob.
I would echo your statement about his membership on the board and his service on the commission. Alright, any other comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn again. Our next meeting, we do not have a meeting next Tuesday. Our next meeting is March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, on that Tuesday, so two weeks from tonight. I would entertain a motion. I love hanging out with you guys, I would stay here all day.
I just said I moved to adjourn, looking for a second, anybody?
Second.
Okay, second.
Alright.
You have a second, there you go. Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
And I for myself, good night, everyone, we'll see you in two weeks, in the interim, take care of yourselves, take care of each other, good night.